...in the future would have to be redone. So, the only thing that would change in the future is the curb and gutter would stay as it is, but then the whole street section would be rebuilt and only that part of the blacktop, you know, would be removed at that time. So, it's kind of an interim step, but it's something that Rob Bistro is very supportive of. We've taken this back to the city council, to the Economic Development Authority, and the state of Minnesota has provided some grant assistance to help pay for this infrastructure in this location. So, I bring this to you again as information. It's new to most of you because you weren't here at the time, but good things take time, I guess. And this one took a while to get here, but it is going to be done next year. So, that's for information purposes.
Any questions on?
Yeah, one.
Yep.
Are we allowed to drain right into the river?
In this case, we are, yes. There's an existing storm, storm sewer system there, and we're just connecting to that. It will be improved, though, because it will be filtered in the, in the rain garden.
Okay.
So, that's, yep.
And that brings us to discussion item seven C, Moline Annexation Update.
I'm gonna show two overheads here, one of which you'll probably recognize. This one, maybe no one recognizes. Kind of an interesting set of circumstances. Brent Moline has gone through, is in, going through the process now to annex about fifty-two acres of land that he owns just south of the, of the new hospital, which is right here. Okay? You'll recognize this when we get a little bit further, but this is the, the highway right-of-way and street right-of-way that's been purchased by Mendat and Goodhue County to build a new interchange in the southeast collector that ultimately will lead all the way up to Highway nineteen. So, a fair amount of the area in orange that's being annexed is already used, if you will, for right-of-way for the roundabouts and the frontage road and the new bypass County twenty-four Boulevard. So, the area in orange is the area that's, that's in the process of being annexed. The area within the pink is designated right-of-way. The graphic that I included in your packet is a little bit more legible, I'm sure, and a little bit more familiar. But you can kind of see where, down in this location where the new interchange is being built now, and then in the yellow coming through the two roundabouts, and then ultimately heading up to sixty-seventh Avenue Way, and then ultimately back up towards the high school. Uh, thank you, Bill. Are, are the roads system of which that earlier drawing is kind of designated as right-of-way? So, you can kind of see where the frontage road is gonna be coming through the Moline property, where it connects back to Highway fifty-two. And what isn't shown here yet on the GIS system is the extension of the, from the southeast collector, excuse me, from the interchange to the southeast collector up to sixty-seventh Avenue. But that road will be connected in that location. So, I'm here tonight-
County Road?
Twenty-four, yep. What I'm here tonight for is, is just a little early feedback. The council will, in all likelihood, complete the second reading of the ordinance to annex this property tomorrow night at their meeting. Thereafter, Brent Moline will come in and make application for zoning for, for the annexed property as well as, as plating of the property. And I expect that that will probably be before us, probably early next year would be my guess. Maybe late this year, but probably early next year. But before we get to that point, I want to just have a little bit of input for you to help guide Brent and his considerations for zoning this property. As I mentioned in the staff report in, in the two thousand and three comprehensive plan, which we don't often refer to, there's quite a bit of outdated information in that plan. But it is still a document of the city, and within that document, we have a land use or a future land use plan for this, for the growth of the city of Cannon Falls. And within the two thousand and three comp plan, this area here, which are the Qualley Storage Sheds, Scott Safe, and Randy Retzickel owns a couple of undeveloped properties, this, these properties here are designated as highway commercial areas in the comprehensive plan. The balance of the Moline property is all, all designated in, in the two thousand and three plan as residential. I don't anticipate that Brent Moline will come in with a plan that proposes all residential development. I'm not so sure he will come in with any proposal for residential development, at least on this fifty, first fifty-two acres. But we'll see. But his comments in discussion with me so far has been some type of highway commercial. I was interested in your feedback tonight because if you've driven out, if you can get out to that area and look, you'll see that there's a lot of topography. There's a lot of hill. There's more than fifty feet of elevation difference, you know, east to west across, across this site. So, there's a fair amount of topography. There's going to be access limitations for the development of this property, either by the city, along the frontage road, by the county, on the County twenty-four Boulevard, or by Mendat on the two roundabouts and the interchange. So, there's gonna be access control. So, it's not gonna be possible for, for Brent to come in and, and simply choose where he wants to access on and off these various roads. They're gonna be restricted by the city, county, and the state. So, with the topography that we've got and with the roads that we've got, with the different jurisdictions that control those roads, there's gonna be some issues here in terms of, of how his proposed development is accessed. But what I wanted to do tonight was, was bring this to your attention and see what kind of thoughts or ideas, if any, you have at this point to help me guide Brent to move forward with his application for land use. Because I think, my own view is there's gonna be a fair amount of undevelopable space and land area within this fifty-two acres because of the roads and, and the topography. We've got, just to the north with the hospital, remember, we rezoned that to the southeast campus PUD. That zoning does allow some multifamily residential development, but it also limits any kind of commercial development to primarily office-type development. But that zoning district is available for Brent to, to apply for if he wishes to, but that doesn't allow, as it's currently written, it doesn't allow for the traditional highway commercial uses beyond office. So, it might not be a perfect fit, but it does allow some residential development. Our B-two highway commercial district doesn't allow residential development, but allows a broad range of, of retail and commercial uses. So, I'm not sure that we've got a one-size-fits-all when he actually comes in to make the request. So, this may be something that we may want to visit either our B-two zoning ordinance, our southeast campus PUD ordinance. We may want to look at this as, as an overall planned unit development district, mixing and matching some of our other districts. It is, it is gonna be a, you know, something that we're gonna have to, to discuss as a planning commission. And we will react, of course, to whatever Brent comes in, when he comes in. But I thought if, if there was any early thoughts, early visions from the commissioners in an informal basis that you'd like me to pass on to, to Brent, I think he really would appreciate that and, and get him to start thinking about, you know, what he might want to propose when this property is annexed. So, here tonight, just looking for your, your input and thoughts about development in that, in that part of the community.
Did you say he has to deal with the state as well as the county?
The, where the state comes in, Bruce, is, is they will have access controls on their property. So, they're not gonna just allow someone to pick a spot and, and have access.
And the county wants to come in there?
The county will, the county will have access controls on their property. We will find a point or points of access with the county. The state, one of the, the things that I do need clarification from them on is when they've bought all their right-of-way, where the limits of their restricted access points are and identify what those are.
So, there's two entities we need to get-
There's two entities we need-
-information before we can-
Yeah, yeah, and-
-really figure anything out.
Yeah. I mean, in terms of access to those roads, that's something that will come out in the process, yep.
The state's pretty picky about between the two roundabouts. It's almost a given that they're not gonna let you touch anything in between there, like they've done in other cities.
My anticipation at this point is that access to this acreage is probably gonna be limited to down here.
Right.
There's not gonna be access up here. This piece here, we're gonna control this, but this piece here probably lends itself best for development in conjunction with, with three other property owners.
Yeah.
Because their access is coming off at this point. And if you've driven out in that area, in between the thousands of trucks, you can see where this access is at this point.
Is that gonna still go beyond the rental spaces there?
Yeah, it's got to get, it's gotta be able to serve all the way to Randy Retzickel's property. So, either there's gonna be one owner there that takes care of all those issues, or it's gonna be three owners where they find a way to cooperate. But the, the state's gotta provide access.
So, it'll still be public road?
Yeah, yep, yep. Up in this area, you know, coming off the county road, the county has approved an access permit, obviously, for the hospital. We expect that we're gonna be able to have one or more points of access off of the county road in a location yet to be determined. But the access up in this area is probably gonna be off the county road because of the grades that exist in this, in this area. So, probably looking at coming into the top part of Brent's property somewhere over in here. So, there's not gonna be, in all likelihood, should never say never, but in all likelihood, there's, there's not gonna be, you know, maybe a, a single road that comes in and connects a couple of roads in this area that are, are the jurisdiction of the county or the city. It just isn't gonna lend itself well, either physically or financially, to that kind of connection. So, so I, I think what's probably gonna, my view, is we could very well be looking at something where we've got a, a development area over here, we've maybe got a development area over here, we've got a development area over here. And from a land use perspective, they might all be the same. They may all be different. I think it's, it's gonna be that kind of situation that we'll be, we'll be faced with as this project kind of unfolds, so. But at this point, Mr. Moline hasn't provided me with any kind of concept drawing of this is his vision, other than he's, he's spoken some, again, as I said, about highway commercial. The comp plan shows it as residential. We're gonna have to see.
Well, that whole area was probably viewed a little differently before that air change came in, you know?
I think, didn't College City have an interest in that at one point in time, earlier on? Isn't that the piece that they had?
They had the piece up further north.
Further up.
Off of three-eighteenth, yep. And the county now owns a good share of that. So, the new, the new County twenty-four Boulevard, does it get up north of three-eighteenth? Much of that is going across-
On the right side up there.
Yep. Much of that is, is going across property that at one time was owned by College City.
Okay.
So, I think it was, the county might've bought thirty acres or something of that that, you know. But that's up here.
I don't think there's any question, at some point, there's gonna be a lot of action up in this area, so.
Yeah.
We just have to keep an open mind on it.
Do you just kind of leave it open and hope that they come in with something that's transitional, working in towards the hospital, more or less, and leave it open to look at what's coming in?
Wouldn't surprise me if you saw a gas station pop up somewhere near that access.
Yeah.
That's just a guess, but.
Well, it's a little tough to get to the other ones, once they change everything around and then have access back on.
Yeah.
The three that are there make life tougher on them, I think. Because there's no way, there's no convenient way to get back on the freeway, and people don't wanna backtrack. That's, that's, that's been proven time and time again.
Yeah. And to, and, and it's difficult right now with, with, you know, the, the bridge now has obviously taken shape, and you get some kind of feel for the relationship of the bridge elevation to the east and west sides of fifty-two. But again, you know, the bridge is located right here. We've got a major hill here. You can see the hospital, you know, sitting over here, but there's still so much grade and so much movement in those grades because of these roads. It's until it actually gets built, it's gonna be kind of tough to really get a firm feel on how this is all gonna look.
I agree.
It really, it's a big, big change out there, and a lot of earth's being moved.
No idea what it's gonna look like.
Well, for him, I could sure see why he would wanna try and annex it.
Yeah.
You know? I think if I were him, I'd probably be trying to annex it, too. But as far as, I guess, what goes in there, you know, I'm not, I'm not so sure. I mean, chances are, something like a gas station does kind of serve the, um, the off-ramp pretty well. I mean, I'm sure there's some people that might like to live close to the access, too, but.
Well, the one, the one thing on the residential side, which would at least interest, interest me some, is again, the, the southeast campus PUD, where we actually said, by conditional use permit, we allow up to seventeen units per acre of residential development in the area that's zoned southeast campus right now. I'm not so sure that, that this piece up here might not be a, you know, a viable location for, for similar zoning of that type, being next to the hospital. The issue will be, though, if there's a commercial, you know, if there's a demand for a, for a gas station, let's say, that's not allowed by that, by that zone right now.
Right.
You know, so it, so if, if, if he chooses that designation, he won't have those kind of opportunities. If he goes to the B, B-two zoning district, then he will have those opportunities, but he won't be allowed residential. So, it kind of throws back, again, depending on how he's looking at this, of, of maybe coming up with a new zoning district or amending one of the districts that we have now to fit one or more of these kind of development areas, because I really think they are separate. They could all be zoned the same thing, but again, because the way the roads are laid out, they're not gonna be interconnected. If you're over here and you're stopping at ABC Commercial Development, and you want to go to XYZ Commercial Development, you're coming all the way around like that, or you're coming back up the hill to do that. So, these areas will allow multiple-site development, but they're not that large by themselves that it's gonna be a, you know, a shopping center environment. They're just not, you know, they're a large property. This, this up here, maybe, but not these two. So, it is gonna be probably, the, the land use designations might be strongly influenced, if not restricted, by access and bordered by the roads. The roads may become the boundaries of our land use districts.
So, more access for commercial operations and less for the residential. But still, you gotta know where they're gonna allow them before you can do anything. And we aren't in charge of half of those, are we? So, it sounds like they're just circle and watch here.
And I'm okay with that, too. But I wanted, like I say, I, I wanted to come and have a conversation with you because I can see what the issues are gonna, gonna be here. And I wanted to begin to familiarize you, too, that this is a nice piece of property. There's no question about that. And I think there's clearly some, some development potential of that property. But what it develops to, obviously, is impacted to a certain degree by the market, obviously, but also our, our land use planning and zoning will, will dictate to a certain degree what's, what's gonna be feasible out there, too. And it's kind of a mixed bag.
Yeah.
It really is.
Where, where are we at? This is probably gonna bring up controversy, but where are we at? Like, if a big box wanted to come in, at one time, that was cut off at the knees, and they weren't allowed to even talk to anybody in town. Where's that at now?
The, the-
Like, if, say, Menards or Home Depot or Fleet Farm or-
They would all, they would all be allowed in the, in the current B-two highway commercial district. So, up and down the fifty-two corridor that's zoned B-two would currently allow that kind of development.
Because it, there is one piece of that that would work good for one of those guys.
Yeah.
You know, or something else similar.
Yeah.
Trader Joe's or-
Yeah.
Who, who knows what-
Knows. They're circling, too.
Traffic on fifty-two, there's absolutely nothing like that till you get up into South St. Paul's.
Mm-hmm.
Or Rochester.
Okay.
But any one of those type of situations would, would be allowed now in the B-two?
In the B-two, right, yep.
Yeah. And I'm sure they're watching, too, so.
Yep.
I don't think there's anything we can do, but just watch.
You've been introduced?
Yep.
Yeah. And I'm fine with that. But like I say, is, it's just something that we're gonna be dealing with here in the not-too-distant future. And, and if there's flexibility here, which it sounds like that's the consensus, show us a good plan. Okay?
Well, I sure don't know that that whole property should be residential. With that close to access, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm sure they, yeah, that's-
I'm not so sure you see any of it come in residential.
No, I don't think so either.
So, we're in agreement that that designation, it's two thousand and three.
It's probably not gonna fit at all.
Pretty limited.
Unless it was some type of old folks home, memory care, assisted living combination where it's a big unit complex type thing. I don't think, I don't-
Something that relates to the hospital, you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's important. I, and again, I, I think to be able, for me to be able to pass on to Brent that the two thousand and three designation at the planning commission level doesn't seem to be the right fit. That seems to be-
Not anymore. But in two thousand and three, I don't think there is an interchange plan there either.
Yeah, 'cause the highway planning started, what, two thousand or so? And then, I mean, here we are, two thousand and thirteen, it's getting built. So, you know, whatever was talked about in two thousand and two, two thousand and one, leading up to the comp plan, there really wasn't this.
Yeah.
That wasn't here.
Two thousand and three and two thousand and four, it was a well-if or maybe, we're never gonna ever see it.
Yeah, yeah. So, that is, that is the big factor of change. You're no question about that.
I'm still concerned about what the county's gonna do. We haven't had a clue from them as far as where they're actually gonna move on this circle route, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
It's gotta be soon, though.
Well, there's a couple of issues there, Bruce. One is, for us as a city, with Brent Moline, to secure access to the new county road, I'm very comfortable that we'll, we'll find a reason there and get that done. I'm not entirely certain about beyond County twenty-five, up to Hardwood and, and Highway nineteen. I'm not entirely sure where that's gonna end up, or when, or how. Yeah. So, we do need to keep watching that, and we're gonna see that in the next item on the agenda.
It's gonna be the big one.
Okay. Fair enough. I think we're at consensus on residential, that designation. Not so good. Okay?
I just don't know that it's gonna fit that well. You know, it's not that you don't see any neighborhoods near, you know, highways or, or freeways. I mean, you do see it, but a little bit less because people don't seem to like the noise from the road. So, it seems like, you know, businesses and, and gas stations and things like that. I mean, it's kind of expected that you're gonna be hearing this noise, but.
Can, can he bring it in, annex it in, and leave it green area and leave it open? And then bring certain pieces in at-
Yeah.
Certain times? And then that way-
Yep.
He's not getting crucified quite so bad on the taxes either, rather than-
Yep.
-going commercial right away or something else.
Yeah.
He can do that. The utilities will be available at the south end of the, of the hospital site and in this location on the frontage road. So, one of the things that he has to address is, of course, the economic feasibility of development. He's gonna have to pay to extend those utilities to this area. So, servicing from a utility perspective up in here sooner and more cost-effectively than here is a reality that, that he will face. Here, because he's got property that's not in the city right now, it may be annexed. These properties may be annexed at some point, but right now, they're not in the city.
Cannon Falls Township.
Cannon Falls Township. This piece, there's probably no need from a timing perspective to move quickly on, on this piece.
Yeah. Well, I know earlier on, a few of the issues, when other things were brought in, you know, the, us as a council had a problem with leaving an open area not brought in and trying to close everything off. Is that gonna affect this, then, if he wants to do that? And then the two things, and we're, you know, we're hemming them in, where, and they're like a, it's a spot zoning type thing?
Well, what I would suggest that, what, what our ordinance allows, and I would recommend to, to Brent, is that when he decides overall what he wants to do, where he wants to begin, and he's got all that stuff put together, if he only wants to bring in hypothetically ten acres, not in the city, it's in the city or will be in the city, probably after council action tomorrow. If he wants to develop ten acres in the first phase and extend utilities to that, we can deal with a ten-acre development proposal as long as we have some sense from a concept plan where we're getting to the rest of the property beyond the first ten. So, we can plat and zone ten acres and leave the balance of forty-two unplatted and undeveloped as long as it's in a logical flow, which is gonna, it's going to be because they need the utilities. So, he's not gonna start down here. I don't think. He could, but he's gonna pay for all the utilities to get down there. I don't expect him to do that.
The user's gonna pay for it.
Oh, yeah. So, there would have to be, again, hypothetically, a buyer down here that was willing to pay the owner enough money that it was in his best interest to extend utilities from this point there to serve it and leaving this undeveloped. If we were building two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred homes a year, back to Dan's point, yeah, we might see some residential development out in these areas. But with the market that we've got and the market we anticipate, it's not economically feasible to do it. And it's probably not gonna be economically feasible to start developing on a, on a piecemeal basis on the far end of your, of your land when the utilities are up here. So, I think there's gonna be a logical flow, and we'll probably do it piece by piece as we go. At the very least, I would like to see a concept plan for everything, sketch plan, similar to what we saw for Glenn Mulvaughn's property, at least that, for everything. But then start, like Glenn is, in a specific location where the utilities are there, and there's an assurance that if it's zoned and platted, that the lots can be sold in a reasonable period of time to make it economically feasible. And I, I think we'll see the same thing here.
Thank you.
And that brings us to discussion item seven D, Mulva- Mulvaughn Property Concept Plan.
Yeah, what's going on over there? I, I scheduled this item out of, first of all, out of convenience for me. I'll explain why in a minute. Glenn came in with the concept plan. You reviewed it, we talked about it. And for the most part, I think there was a nod of support and agreement that the general concept was, was fine. The utilities that were extended from the north side of nineteen to serve these ten homes, if you've been out in that area, you can see where they are, but they're coming down Seventy-second Avenue. There's six lots here that now have services connected to the sewer and water mains that are coming down Seventy-second to serve these ten homes. Okay? So, there's six lots on the east side of Seventy-second that, if zoned and if platted, can be sold and developed as residential units. So, I'm expecting we'll see Glenn sometime before the beginning of, of the new year, coming in with a proposal to plat and, and rezon those six lots and possibly more. I mentioned in my memo to you that I've, I've sent this plan to the highway department because I think there's little question that, the one big question with regards to development in this area is points of access to Highway nineteen. And to a lesser degree, to the future of, of the county road. It's important, but I think the, the more challenging consideration on this plat will be point or points of access onto Highway nineteen. I'm not here tonight to ask you where those points are gonna be because you're not gonna make that decision, nor am I. We'll, we'll be part of it, but we won't make that final decision. But what I am here tonight for is some guidance before I get into more specific conversation with the highway department about this concept, about the issue that was brought up in Tanner's Grove, and that is connection of a land development project here to the school. And in the Tanner's Grove development, the proposal was that there would be an underpass constructed underneath Highway- And in the Tanner's Grove development, the proposal was that there would be an underpass constructed underneath Highway nineteen to connect? The Tanner's Grove development? To the school. Tanner's Grove never developed. The underpass was never built, but that was the conversation back when Tanner's Grove came in. It's important to me to get a better sense and some direction from the planning commission at this point, and again, it's informal and, and not, not an official commitment by you. But as I go forward in conversations with Mindot, this question about crossing nineteen? Not just with vehicles, but potentially with pedestrians, because of the proximity to the, to the school system, is important. And I'm just looking for some guidance from the commissioners now about your thoughts on? A crosswalk? An overpass, an underpass? When? Who pays? How do we get it done, sort of thing, if we're gonna do it? I'd like some of that feedback now, just in terms of, of, of the pedestrian connection that? May be made in the future, if it's gonna be required, between this development and the school. And that would help me in my conversations with Mindot, because I know, you know, their number one concern is vehicular? Connections to Highway nineteen, but there's no question, just because the school is right there? And there's a hundred and twenty-one homes proposed here, that if this ever develops the way it's showing? At some point, it's not like it's gonna be the first six lots, but at some point? There's gonna be a question raised by this commission, by the city council, by neighbors, by folks who buy lots out there, by the school, by someone? About? A pedestrian connection? Across nineteen. So I'm just tonight looking for some, some of your feedback, we kinda glossed over it a little bit when Glenn was, was here the first time. But I wanted to revisit it, because I don't think there's any question? That the main issue around this plat is vehicular connection, street connection to Highway nineteen? And/or any kind of pedestrian crossings over nineteen. So, I'm here tonight? For your thoughts. Now, you're not gonna be able to see the colors, but? There's a? Blue identification at, at hardwood, pink, this is where the proposed access is? On the concept plan? And then on Seventy First, you're all familiar with the, with the school and the right turn in, and we've got kind of a? Access, at least on the north side of nineteen now, but it seems to me? That if there's gonna be a, a crossing? An at-grade crossing? It's probably either at? This point, which is the proposed access by the developer onto nineteen? Possibly at hardwood, or possibly? At Seventy First. Those would seem to be the, the most logical locations.
One in the cemetery would actually work out the best.
I agree with the Seventy First Avenue, one would be the best. But it means you're gonna have to have some access, pedestrian access.
And that way you could do pedestrian and?
That's right.
Signal, or, that'd be your most cost-effective, because I know we looked at that tunnel before. They wanted to go in underneath, and? Number one, that's gonna cost the city an arm and a leg to maintain the? Graffiti on it. Cause out of sight means that? It will get taken advantage of, and then? It, it's too much of a problem, there's too much water coming down through there, there's? I mean, there's too much of a potential for an accident on a heavy rainstorm, I think? I, I never liked the idea of the tunnel under, I know everybody was really pushing it back then, but? It looked like an accident waiting to happen to me. And I, I think it was probably the most expensive route to go.
Yeah, it's probably cheaper to build a sidewalk over to Seventy First than to dig out tunnel.
Yeah, and that, they were thinking they could use that? Culvert that's there now, and you gotta bend over to get through it, and I'm, I'm not too tall.
Yeah, I, that, that, the one that's there can't be used.
No.
Yeah.
I never did like that idea to start with, plus it lines up with over, kinda by the grade school, and you got such a grade difference? Running down in through there too much, where, when they were doing Tanner's Grove, they had it kinda? It's probably right. Lined up with the, the houses and the grade school a little bit more than?
Yeah. And to serve, if this, this okay thing to say, to serve the greater good, it should serve the school.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's the other? Side of this conversation, we're gonna? Have to involve and would want to involve the school in the review of this plat anyway, relative to those issues. If there's gonna be a crossing, again? Where's it best served for them, and if it is crossing over nineteen? How does it connect into their existing pedestrian system, which it won't? There's gonna have to be additional investments made, probably on the north side of nineteen around the school, to, to connect to something that comes across too, so? Uh, that's a whole nother conversation, but it's gonna have to occur.
Tanner's Grove people, they were pushing that, tying it into the bike path and all that, and? You know, they had all the fancy little bike trails running through their community, and up the hill, and?
Am I hearing cool support, if any, for an underpass? At this point? It's not a commitment.
Won't get any support from me.
Not from me either, I don't think it's a good idea. I can't see the logic of it, really. Where, where was the logic of having an underpass? Before, maybe there was one, but I don't see it now.
Well, I suppose in that area, though, an underpass probably makes more sense than an overpass.
You were just taking it through the school.
To get over the top, you really have to build that thing up? I would think.
An overpass, you say?
Yeah.
Bridge.
Yeah.
You would, you would end up just, I mean, you? Even on the side where that Mulville property, what, what do you think the grade difference between the road is, right in that spot? Ten, fifteen feet at least, isn't it?
Well, yeah, it's, you get over here, it's, it's down quite a bit lower.
Yeah.
So it's, you're coming down a long way.
You'd be building up?
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty feet.
Dave, would there be the issue? If you had a crossing? Say on Seventy First there, uh? With Mindot, as you know, we had quite a history with trying to get one by the ball field.
Well? Yeah, I mean, I?
What'd you say? Well, you'd think right by the school would be easier.
The pedestrian crossing that we're gonna have by the ban shell in that John Birch Park?
They didn't.
We fought for years, and we're finally getting it. I don't wanna see a repeat if we try and cross it Seventy First.
Yeah, I mean?
You're gonna have the same battle doing the tunnel. The state isn't gonna pay to put the tunnel underneath there, so that you got the same bundle.
They're not gonna pay, but the permitting would be probably simpler? To go under, rather than across at grade, like we're proposing, or like we will build next year? Um, at John Birch to the park and ride facility, but that, as Bill said, that was years? Years. And I think the answer to your question, Bill, and maybe I'm overly optimistic based on the, the, the significant? Turnaround by Mindot on the? The John Birch Crossing, that? If it's in the right location, and it makes sense to Mindot, maybe there's a chance for an at-grade crossing? I'm not sure what to expect from them, not so much on the pedestrian end, but just again, on the, on the vehicular? The, the street connection from this subdivision. Six lots is not gonna mean much to traffic on Highway nineteen. A hundred and twenty-one homes, yeah, will mean something. But we really need to find out from Mindot what they're thinking, uh, in terms of? Access point or points, probably point, on nineteen from this development. But I wanna be able to, to also discuss with them the aspect of pedestrians, if we think, if we think it's important.
They've been out there already, haven't they? I've seen them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I've got three that are really not even cool to the idea, what about, for an underpass, what about the other three? Not so much?
Probably not. Underpass by the school, I don't? I don't think it's smart, I?
You got a holding pond.
Too many fourteen and fifteen-year-old kids with not a lot to do some of the times.
With access to the holding pond.
Yeah.
And the overpass, and again, economics aside, um, I agree with Dan, I mean, the, the, the overpass idea? Given the existing grades out here, is no small investment either.
Well, almost any place you do it along there, other than up by Seventy First Street by the cemetery? Whether it's an at-grade crossing or a overhead, is? Just doesn't make sense. To me.
Yeah, I?
But I like to deal in common sense, and the state and the planners like to deal in? Well if and maybes, and? Pie in the air.
Well, I think? You know, I, I, I'm curious as well on the Seventy First? Um, access? We'll be dealing with sidewalks and/or trails in this development. We haven't had, at least since I've been here? A residential? Development proposal like this, multiple lots? Our ordinance talks about sidewalks, we'll have to deal with sidewalks, I'm not sure that there wouldn't be some opportunities for a variance? From sidewalks, uh, in terms of what the ordinance says in our subdivision code right now? But if, if? There's gonna be a at-grade crosswalk, and it's over in this location somewhere? We've gotta be able to get? From here over to there.
Right.
Unfortunately, there's no benefited property owners on the west side of Seventy First. We could come back down? The highway right-of-way, perhaps? Which would be a little bit shorter distance, and maybe that would be better, in terms of focusing traffic that way. Those folks who are over here? Will just walk down the gravel road, and that'll be it, but?
Right.
But we gotta be able to get from the? The main part of the development over to this location, and? It's gonna be over either the, the highway right-of-way, or we gotta come out this way and down, down Seventy First, with either a? Sidewalk trail or something to do that, and then the question about internal sidewalks and trails, which we don't need to discuss or resolve tonight, but? But it seems like to me, too, that? Conversation should? Begin around this point? Um, and getting input from the school, and Mindot, and? The landowner, obviously.
Most we can figure out an easy way to get them down the hill and through two residential lots.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's? It's a question, and again, I wanted to, to get, to get your input tonight, just because I know with Tanner's Grove, it was part of that deal? And it sounds like maybe it's not gonna be a part of this deal, at least in terms of the underpass? But it sounds like, at least at some point, from the, from the commissioners, that? Maybe there's gonna be enough demand over here where something needs to be connected to the, to the schools? Across nineteen?
Yeah, I mean, currently? I don't know, I don't know what the timeframe is for the hundred and twenty houses either.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be six right now, and? You know, ten a year from now.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't think, I don't think we had anything definite on a timeframe, when they expected to have the? Whole development finished, so?
I think too, Dan, I mean, it, cause, cause I've, I've been around this long enough, I see what happens to these deals. And I'm not gonna pick on this one, but I'll use it as an example, so let's say that, that this part of the development develops first? And fifty percent of those lots are sold, and the first? Number of people that buy in here, they go back in the public record and see that, like in Tanner's Grove, there was a conversation about an underpass? And they begin to wonder when it's gonna be built, because they saw it in the record. I would just assume that we establish in our record early on? What we think makes sense, where we think it makes sense, and also when we think? Development is to the point where it would trigger the construction of, of something like that? And if we ultimately say we wanna require it on day one, that's fine, we can get there and talk about that? But if it's not gonna be day one, if it's gonna be pushed off into the future? I think it's beneficial from the city's perspective to have some identification in the record and/or the development agreement that says? This is what's gonna trigger the construction of an at-grade crossing, let's say.
I think should be taken off the plate, just? You got a new time, you got a new owner, you've got a new type of development, really, it's not the same as Tanner's Grove? Was, in the way that it's put together, I think you just should start with a clean plate.
Yeah, we'll start with a clean plate.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I know how those things work, and we've got other developments in this community where certain things were said at a certain time, and? We get questioned about, well? Where is this?
That was another time.
Where are these things? We bought this property in anticipation of, where are they?
Yeah.
Seven hundred and twelve single-family homes were supposed to be all aligned.
Little, little different deal.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, I think we're being realistic here.
You are, you are. What I'll do then is, is move forward with Mindot? On seeing if we can narrow down the, the issues on the points of access onto nineteen? And have the conversation about? You know, we're certainly? Prepared to, to consider and, and evaluate the crosswalk situation, but we haven't? Gone any further than? We think it bears our consideration, and then see where that takes us. But we're not going over, we're not going under.
Thoughts from the? Dozen landowners that are in there?
No, not on this?
Yeah.
No. I'm, I'm guessing that? They're all familiar? With Tanner's Grove, do you think there's any changes out there for, or all the ones that are there now, where?
It reminds me of, uh, a couple of different ownerships that buy in large, most of them.
Seem familiar, so?
Two of them that are different.
Two? Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think there's a pretty significant familiarity with what was proposed before? And so that's maybe softened? This a little bit?
What are you worried about?
I don't worry.
My concern is you start putting sidewalks across people's?
Well, that's gonna be the biggest issue, yeah.
Forty or fifty years, and?
Yeah.
We have somebody here that can tell you what he thinks of sidewalks?
Yeah.
Going across their property, so? On a firsthand basis.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And the cost and stuff involved, so?
Yeah.
Well, we experienced that a couple of years ago, when we? I think it was putting some on the west side when we redid West Side One.
Yeah.
And, uh, that got? Shot down, barely, but got shot down.
And again, that's the relationship on this one, if we're gonna have a crosswalk? How do we get there?
Yep.
Well, I? Probably a little bit of research into it to make sure it's not gonna be used, or that it is gonna be used? Cause what is it? There's up? Up at the northern part of the city's not Blaine, but there's one of those up there where there's? Like fifty-five little cuts across up there, or maybe it's eighty-one, Brooklyn Park.
Probably eighty-one, Brooklyn Park.
And they've had like, five or six little kids peeled off in the last? How many years, and they, they don't use the crosswalk, they cut across in the middle, cause McDonald's is right across the road, straight across in the middle.
My concern with crosswalk right at that intersection, is there's times that I'm scared pulling out of that school parking lot in the mornings, if I'm there for a meeting or something? You get a crosswalk with little kids crossing there? That, that's, I, I?
It's already really busy right there, I mean, that's the one unfortunate thing.
You're scared of walking across the crosswalk there.
It would have to be a controlled intersection.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a cat doesn't exist.
You're figuring a hundred and twenty houses, you, just say two kids per house? That's a lot of traffic, just some kids coming across the street.
Yeah. Yeah. It is.
Interesting.
Well, we'll put it on the docket for a future agenda, and?
I don't, personally, I don't think there's an easy solution to it.
And you know that the bus, they aren't getting bussin' that close.
Are these houses, um? The houses that are already existing there? Between Seventy First and Seventy Second, they're new enough to have a setback, aren't they? I mean, they're set back farther than what we'd run into the? In, in the older part of the community.
Well, certainly along nineteen, the frontage there is setback.
They have to, yeah.
Mr. Gibson, he lives right there facing nineteen, and who else, who's the other?
Yeah. So there are setbacks, I'm, I'm sure.
Those are.
Well, they're, yeah, but?
The other ones are a little close to the?
Which ones?
The ones where you come in either from the east side or the west side, those are, I think those are a little closer.
Yeah, that, they would be.
Yeah, even this isn't gonna show very well, Bruce, but?
Yeah, I, I, I've got an idea. It's all tore up there now, they tore it up pretty good.
House, house, oh, so they're set off of Seventy Second, off of nineteen? House, house, house.
Right.
I don't think they're set back.
And the property lines are right up against the cemetery.
The side streets, they are on the highway, though.
That's more like a trail.
Yeah.
Where's the right of way for the highway?
That's where the street's going there right now.
So there's a little work with there. Yeah, a little narrow. Okay, well, that might be enough.
I was hoping for the easy answer.
No.
If you have a controlled intersection there at seventy-one and the school, in the form of? Stop and go line. stop-and-go light of some is we wanna slow down around the school anyhow.
Boys are down there quite a bit anyway, I notice all the time. Parked there by the cemetery.
It amazes me with how many teenage drivers there are.
Reason they're there.
As busy as it gets, there, there's not more accidents there now.
Mm-hmm.
It's just nuts.
Cause I think they're blocking off the one entrance off that goes to what's the street on the east side of the parking lot? They're blocking that one entrance off now. When, so they gotta either come out Minnesota Street, or they gotta come out nineteen. Cause they're shooting down that alley and, and all there's a few people that are upset about that. So they, my, I was told that they're blocking that entrance and exit off.
Oh, okay, the first, as you're heading.
If you, on the east side, it'd be the west side of the parking, west side of the parking.
On the west side.
They're blocking, I'm sorry, wrong side.
Yeah.
Okay, well. You've confirmed that there's no easy answers. So I feel better. But those will be coming too, and like I say, MNDOT will have a lot to, to say on this, and we'll, we'll get started with them in a more formal way, and then when Glenn wants to come in for his plat, we'll hold public hearings and, and go from there.
There's no timeline on that at all for crosswalk or not. It's kinda just a
No, I, yeah, I.
Prepare for the future?
Yes.
Type thing?
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to plug, plug this in since we're starting the conversation with MNDOT now, but yeah, I, he's got six lots that have utilities for next year. Not worried about it yet?
Year, or a year and a half off about, worrying about too much of anything on the problem.
Yeah.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah. MNDOT will weigh in on, on the concept plan, the proposal to change, to, to cut off the current access at Seventy Second. They'll, they'll weigh in on that relative to these six lots. They're not gonna close it down, you know, at this point for six lots. But they'll weigh in on the plan that, that Mulville submitted that closes that off and creates a new access to the east. That's really what we.
That runs over, that runs over by the church over there and comes out the back way eventually when the place, when the whole development's built out.
Yeah, one, one, one point, yeah.
Over to, over.
Yeah, yeah. At Hardwood.
Hardwood there, yeah.
Yeah. So.
And that makes more sense to funnel it all out over there anyway and let it get spread out.
Yeah. Well, good, well, that's all I've got on this one.
Thank you.
Any questions that any of you have on what's going on other than everything's torn up?
I think Brewster is gonna look good.
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Yep. Yep, that'll be.
The way it's starting out.
I do have a comment.
Yeah?
Are we enforcing our lo- our noise restrictions in Cannon Falls?
What?
I have, are we enforcing noise restriction? I'm wearing hearing aids here, and man, I'll tell ya. I know I live in a place where it's noisy, but I haven't had a year like this for quite a while.
Trucks?
It's not just trucks. Well, it could be any size trucks from an economy size on up, but, but, um, there are times when I, I think that if you roll your window down a little bit, you can hear some of this noise clear across town. And you certainly can track them going through town, just from where I'm at. But, um, I just haven't had a year where it's just been this noisy, and a lot, lot of, uh, jake breaking going on. A lot of, um, mufflers cut off both, both, uh, recreational vehicles, I guess I call them, trucks, and, uh, and some motorcycles. Not too bad on the motorcycles, but.
But Bruce, that's not necessarily just common where you're, you're.
I'm glad to hear that.
E- even on where I live, on Third Street Southwest, I swear these, some of these vehicles don't have mufflers.
No, I'm reasonably, you know, and, and.
Have mufflers?
You know.
I mean, I got my windows and doors closed and I.
You probably rattle on the windows.
Just, just thought I'd bring that subject up because it has been more irritating this year than any other, for quite some time. I actually called on it once.
That's something we can bring, or to, uh, at least you.
No, I have, once. That was when the jake breaking was going on a lot, yeah. But this year it seems to be a little more than that.
Well, we got a substantial amount more traffic in town, too.
Well, they, it's not.
Get off of twenty-five between six-thirty. Get into town between six-thirty and eight.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I, and I'm, you know, I live where I live, so I expect to have it noisy, but I don't expect it to be rude. And that's what I'm seeing from a lot of these drivers, is pretty rude behavior with noise. They hit the corner and floor it, you know?
That's why you wanna hope that that southeast collector gets done sooner or later.
I don't think that that'll stop that, no, and, you know.
But it'll, it'll, it'll reduce some of the truck traffic.
Well, the, yeah, and that's, it's, the, some of the smaller trucks are equally as bad, so, just thought I'd bring it up.
The buses, even the school buses get after it.
Yeah, and that's a different kinda noise, that's, their transmissions squeal more, you know? Just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
Any other planning commission member comments? Hearing none, that brings us to number nine on the agenda, which is adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.